Good evening and welcome to this evening's council meeting for Monday, July 10th, 2017. I'm Mayor Ted Schaefer, and with me this evening are my council colleagues, Counselor Arnold, Counselor Albrecht, will be here shortly, Counselor Stortebum, Counselor Martin, Counselor Vandenberg, and Counselor Bahal. At the staff table, we have Darren Light, Paula Cusack, and Francis Chung, who is our CAO. At the other table, we have Roy Beddows, Rick Baumhoff, and Kim Hilton. Kim is manning the screens there. So, the first item we have is a public hearing. And I've called the public hearing to order. And I'll ask, well, first of all, I better read this out, make it all official. "The public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider the following proposals. Bylaw 3023 zoning amendment and development permit, DP 06-17. Purpose is to amend the zoning bylaw 1996, number 2100, to rezone the properties located at 1978255A Avenue and 5519198 Street from RS1 Single Family Residential Zone to CD48 Comprehensive Development Zone to accommodate a 17-unit townhouse complex. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council and all persons present who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaws and development permit shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the amendment. Those of you who wish to speak concerning the proposed bylaw on development permit commence your comments to council by clearly stating your name and address. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the amendments. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw and development permit with individual citizens. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. Any persons who wish to make a written submission to council may do so. All those submissions will be retained by the corporate officer and copies of the submissions will be available from her upon request of the hearing." Now, we are going to ask the corporate officer how the public hearing was advertised.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Notices were mailed and hand-delivered to owners and occupants within 100 meters of the subject properties, and ads were placed in the June 29th and July 6th issues of the Langley Advance. And no correspondence was received for this bylaw.
Thank you. And this is for bylaw 3023. I'd like to ask Antler Pacific Architecture to present their proposed development. I believe it's Brian who's going to?
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council. My name is Brian.
Use the mic right very close to you.
Is that good? I'm Brian Chikatomi of Attelier Pacific Architecture. The entire development project team is here as well, in the case there are any questions or concerns from the public that we can address at the same time. The Terrace's 2 project, as Ken mentioned, is the Phase 2 of a townhouse development. It's immediately north of the Phase 1 project. It involves two buildings. Just get through some of these items here. It involves two buildings, a total of 17 units. One is addressing 198th and one an internal strata road. There's a strata road that's proposed that runs north-south, and has access from the lane. There's some off-street parking as well. Primarily tandem units. There are two side-by-side units at the north end of the site. The buildings are primarily three-story buildings, but the southern units are four stories. It's just a quick parking lot of how the parking works and the visitor parking. There's also some on-street parking as well, and we're looking at traffic calming measures of bulging out the roads on the corners. I reviewed some of these things. The crime prevention through environmental design was similar to the approach that we took on Phase 1. The outside of the building is very similar to the Phase 1 portion. It's the exact same materials, but a slightly different color scheme, so that it, you can see that it complements the adjacent site. You can tell on the top floor where we have the rooftop gardens. The outdoor rooftop gardens are actually private, dedicated for each of the units. Just a quick side view facing 55A. And the driveways are accessible through an internal road and access from the lane, as mentioned before.
David, do you want to briefly? Hi, I'm David Yurkey. I'm the Registered Landscape Architect on this project from Vander Zaman Associates. So, the landscape architecture as well is very similar to Terrace's Phase 1. We have street tree plantings on either side of the development with some plantings through the corridor along the main drive aisle to make sure that everything has a calm appearance from the street and both the interior lanes. We've provided foundation plantings around each unit, as well as separation between all the rear yards, including fencing. There's rooftop patios for every unit, as you can see on the plans there, with outdoor seating and a little trellis feature for everyone to gather. And perimeter plantings, we'll be working with the off-site to make sure that they meet the city standards. Thank you.
The development project manager, Kyle Stewart, would like to just mention about the public information meeting that was held for the project.
Greetings, Mayor, Council. My name is Kyle Stewart from Concost Management. I just wanted to say a couple of words about the public information meeting. It was held on May 29th from 6:00 to 8:00. We had one attendant. Efforts to contact people in the neighborhood regarding notification were made two weeks prior. We did mail-outs within 100 meters and hand-delivery. We also made email and phone calls to all of the surrounding strata managers and property managers to make sure everyone had an opportunity to come out. The comments we received were really with respect to this phase of development, so much as construction issues on the first phase of development, which we have taken into consideration and worked to mitigate with one of the nearby residents. But there weren't any comments with respect to the site plan or the landscape plan at this time. Thank you.
You had one person show up?
Just one person, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
That's all you have to say?
And we're here to answer any questions that you might have as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Probably the one person. So, those that deem that their property is affected, would you like to come up to the mic? And we have one speaker?
Paul Fitzgerald.
Well, it's, it's, Council, Mayor, hi. I was here last December, I think, the last time. Yes, I have to admit, these contractors and developers are really good to work with. Being in construction for 30 years myself, they've been very accommodating. The one issue that was brought up at the open house was lane access. And I had cancer surgery on April 27th, and I think it was on April 28th, my caregiver came over to try and access the lane, and it was completely blocked by the dump trucks. And the truck driver just turned off his key and folded his arms. He was one of the contractors, but what I brought up was a dialogue. You know, you need flag people. Doesn't matter, you know, when there's trucks coming in and out like there was, there has to be somebody you can mediate between to have a dialogue. And it was, from the next day on, every time, they had a lot of truck action, there was a flag person there, and it was really appreciative. As far as the next phase, there's one more house to be torn down, and this, you know, this isn't being done by the other contractor for the other project up 55A, is when they tear down the houses, the dust is just unbearable. And I have, you know, asthma, and I saw in the beginning of the last time they tore down houses, they were hosing down to keep the dust down, so I just asked that, when the house is torn down, the next one, just the same thing, to hose the, keep the dust down a bit, and that, you know, keeps things a little bit livable for everybody. But, like I said, these guys have been fantastic, as compared to the other contractors, which have been a bit of a nightmare for the marquee residents. But, yeah, it's, as far as I can see, it's mostly positive. There is one other question that came up in a discussion with some of the other owners is the fence that our contractor put up between the marquee on the east side for the front 55A. That, there's a fence that was put up, you know, between our property and the remaining house. Is, do you have no intentions of tearing that down? There's no, there's nothing that's going to make you guys tear that fence down, that you know of? So, it's the east end of our complex.
East end of your complex?
Yes. So, it's bordering the house that still has to be torn down.
Yeah. If the fence is on the property, it's going to get, we're going to be putting our own fencing up adjacent to the fencing on your complex.
Okay.
Is it on our property?
Well, it was put up by our contractor, the builders of the marquee. It's the same color. Okay, so, yeah. I think, actually, we're getting our fences painted, so they had a guy there today to paint them or to give estimates. So, anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. They're much appreciated, and they're positive. So, the contractor must be doing something right out there, so, to win you over. So, that's great. Thank you very much. Anyone else on the speakers list? None? Okay. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing then. Counselor Stortebum, Counselor Arnold, all those in favor? It's unanimous for. Next item we have is the adoption of the agenda, that the July 10th agenda be adopted and circulated. Counselor Vandenberg, Counselor Arnold, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Adoption of the minutes, that the minutes of the regular meeting held on June 26th be adopted and circulated. Counselor Albrecht, Counselor Stortebum, all those in favor? It's unanimous for. Now, the business arising from the public hearing, bylaw 3023, to rezone the properties located at 5519198 and 1978255A Avenue from RS1 Single Family Residential Zone to CD48 Comprehensive Development Zone to accommodate a 17-unit townhouse development. This is the third reading. I now need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Albrecht, Counselor Arnold, any discussion? Counselor Bahal?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just have a couple of questions of the folks who are putting this project together. I just wanted to comment, I'm very happy to see the bumpouts, pocket parking, that's one of the things we've heard from the neighbors in that area, and to see that continue through these projects on the 198th Street corridor is fantastic, along with issues that were identified previously about lighting. And I see that in the plans you called out, lighting and changes you may need to do to ensure that there's adequate lighting or lighting that's not causing pollution to other residents. So, I'm glad that that was incorporated as well, and that there is going to be a narrowing of the road width to encourage traffic calming, which is one of the things we've seen as well. So, congratulations for doing all these things. I did have two questions I'm hoping I could get answered. One of them is the windows, is that a one-way window into the garage, or is that some other sort of design in for the townhouse? So, if anyone could answer that, that would be interesting to know, because I know we've seen that in other projects as well.
I have to apologize, I geeked out there for a minute. I only caught part of that.
Oh, so, for the windows, for the front property on 198th, there's windows and there's the park, the garage there.
Yeah.
Now, is that an actual window?
Yes.
So, they can look out but not look in?
Yes.
Yeah, perfect. And the other question I had is, it's great that you, we had a positive comment about construction, because that's generally not what we hear. And I was wondering, what were those issues that you identified in Phase 1, and how did you incorporate that? Because obviously, you're doing something well.
Yeah, I think in terms of construction, right now, it's only the demolition, site clearing. The permit is yet to be issued.
Yeah.
So, as the work is progressing, there'll be site construction safety orientation for the entire crew in the neighborhood will obviously see that work going on, the flag people as well, and the security board. And so, there's a whole strategy in terms of maintaining the site. And the developer is a developer builder, so it's all built-in, I guess, corporate strategies in terms of how to deliver sites, so, yeah.
Okay. And I think the final question is just with parking management during construction, is that something that you are taking into account during this as well?
I believe so.
Hi, I'm Bryce Lucas, Project Coordinator for Concost Management on Terrace's. We have gone through and developed a preliminary parking plan. It's mostly that there'll be no trade parking on any of the streets, 55 and 55A. There'll be no parking whatsoever anywhere near the laneway in between the two phases. Any parking that will be done will be on 198th, because it's a connector road, so it can handle the capacity. But any other trade parking will be wherever they can find it away from the site to make sure that residents will still have their own parking, and there won't be any issues.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, oh, Counselor Vandenberg?
Can you tell me a little bit more about the rooftop gar, did you say rooftop gardens?
They're roof terraces, so it'll be paved areas, a trellis element, and a place to barbecue and places to sit down, but it's private per unit.
Per unit?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I thought maybe it might be a community garden for everybody to grow herbs and stuff or something like that. You got me all excited there, but that's good to hear. I'd just like to actually make a comment that I think it's fantastic that the construction company is working with the residents, and the residents are working with the, the communication is fantastic, and I think that's a really good thing. And I think it's lacking in a lot of businesses nowadays, and in the world in general, so it's really good to see. So, kudos to you for everybody for doing that, to working together, and it really makes the city of Langley a community when that sort of stuff happens. So, thank you.
The other part is Concost is actually opening an office in City of Langley, so they will be here locally. So, I think that's a important part to maintain a good relationship with the people in the city and their citizens.
Welcome to the hood. So, I just wanted to be, put some clarity into it. This is the zoning bylaw 1996, or 2100, Amendment 138, 2017, number 3023, just to make it legal. Okay. All those in favor? Against? That's unanimous. So, we're up and away, guys. Thank you for coming, and it'd be great to see your office. We're now going to go under a community spotlight, and the first one we have is the RCMP Quarterly Update. We have Superintendent Murray Power, who's the officer in charge this evening here tonight. And the floor is yours, Murray.
It's great to be here again. It's been a little bit of time since my last presentation. And just to give you a brief overview, we have a new quarterly reporting process that we're implementing. This will be the first presentation of our new structure, aimed at being more in-depth, covering the business of policing, along with the crime report, community interest, our strategic objectives, which we will roll through here this evening. I'm joined with Sergeant Balsadou, who authored this report for me, and has worked closely with Staff Sergeant Mike Coyle and Inspector Peter Jadis in the audience tonight on this. So, we'll roll through it here, and be open to any questions at the conclusion. So, we'll leave this for a public message, but, you know, really, the message is about what we're trying to do is to recognize the growth and the complexity of the township and the city with regards to existing within the lower mainland of British Columbia, such a diverse area, and very complex with regards to policing as we move forward. We're all alive to incidences that take place in neighboring communities, which could, you know, show up on our doorstep at any time. So, we're trying to stay ahead of issues like that, along with combating what is really in our backyard that we know, you know, the fentanyl crisis and the homeless issues that continue to be a top priority for the city of Langley. So, really, what we want to do is show you the different priorities that we've established with regards to how we're running the detachment. These are issues that we've been doing forever, however, not really reporting back. So, this framework will show the accountability and transparency that we're trying to give to the community with key components in policing that are necessary if we're going to have really robust partnerships with our external partners. One of the main areas for focus in the city, and we talk about this, we have talked about this for a number of years, since I've been doing this job, is the homelessness situation. Our community liaison officers, who I'll allude to again, are very engaged with city staff to deal with the homeless situation and all the challenges that go with it. Conversely, Inspector Sean Boudreau and Corporal Steve McKetty have been active participants in Langley City's efforts to reduce crime and deal with homelessness as part of different strategic initiative groups. Just on the topic of innovation with regards to this quarter, in the photograph, you can see a really large-looking scope. It's a spotting scope. It's, our traffic unit had requested that, so we have purchased that for them, and as you can see, it's long-range, you can see up to 2 kilometers with this spotting scope. So, and as you can see in the photograph, there are cameras attached to the end of it. So, if you want to be distracted driving a couple kilometers away from the police down the road, we'll have a picture ready for you by the time you show up, so we can pretty much have a roadside discussion on what was going on. So, they're quite excited about the potential of this new tool. With distracted driving being so topical, it's really, really critical that we use all the technological advances that we can come up with. So, that's something new that we've just purchased in the last quarter, and as I said, the members are very excited about using it already. On the efficiencies piece, we're constantly looking at how we do business to make sure it's best bang for the buck, and we're doing the best we can. One of the key things that we do is, we call it peak period policing. So, the resources you see on the road, the general-duty police officers essentially work 11- and 12-hour shifts, four on, four off, which everybody's familiar with. But what we look at is, when do the calls for service come in? And we're adjusting our starting times to meet that. So, really, from noon till 5:00 PM, Monday to Friday, those are the busiest times for calls for service, which do make sense, because people are awake, they're engaged with other human beings, and eventually, we end up getting called. So, we have now, instead of just the morning starting time, we start at 6:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, 10:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the afternoon, 6:00 in the evening, and 7:00 PM. So, we're constantly starting new members, so that we are staffed up at the busiest time. What we're trying to do there is reduce citizens' wait time for calls for service that are non-emergency. So, when the calls are stacking up, we have more members coming on duty, so we can address those. So, we call that peak period shifting, and we've been tweaking that for the last couple of years, and we just tweaked it again in the last couple of weeks. So, it's an ongoing thing. The other issue is, for the summertime going forward, the school liaison officers, obviously, the schools are shut down, so they're transferring over to do more bike patrols, which are great, always well-received in both communities. Now, I mentioned earlier, our community liaison officers, we've talked about them at previous sessions, they are just nothing but a continual success story for our detachment. You know, you're familiar with originally Corporal Shannon Savankoff, and we thought when Shannon left, oh my goodness, we're going to lose Shannon. Then we brought in Dave Salavich, and oh, Dave's great, and then we moved Dave over, and then we brought in Steve McKetty. And the beauty is, I think, we continue to bring in quality members to this position, and we try to deal with issues quickly and efficiently. It's not phone calls and emails, we go to people's houses and deal with them, and it's really that, the level of service that I think you folks are looking for is what we're trying to deliver. So, on top of that, they're dealing with homeless issues with your bylaws officers on a regular basis, and, you know, with Reserve Constable Rob de Borsap and the community liaison officers, they've been very successful at doing the best they can to help the homeless stay safe, and at the same time, allowing the businesses and the citizens to enjoy their communities. So, it's walking that fine line, and that's been very successful for us. On top of that, in the proactive activities, again, I thank you, Your Worship and Council, for showing up at our annual town hall session that we had at the HD Stafford. It's always, you know, Langley City and Alder Grove, I can always count on a great turnout, and there was no exception there. I thoroughly enjoy those evenings, and, you know, the support from yourselves is really noticed by our, all the members from our detachment. It was very successful. I do apologize in the photograph, this is, actually, they're citizens of Langley City that came over to our Brookswood meeting, and they're all new Canadians, and they came as a sort of an event, an evening at a learning session as part of their schooling. And it turned out to be one of the most interactive, enjoyable town halls that I had, because there's people from all different countries, and we compared Canadian crime with crime around the world, and it was really, so, very, very informative for them and for us. And so, we decided to take a little photograph afterwards, but next year, we'll have photographs of the Langley City Town Hall session, and we'll try to capture you folks as well in our publications. You all remember, it's a little bit dated, but it's still one of our significant successes with our Syrian refugee barbecue last October, and really, still a moving event for myself personally, to put humanity to what these folks have been through, and it just humanizes the situation, and it's a game changer once you meet these folks. And that was a huge success, with the objective of making the police station a non-scary location for them. We wanted it to be welcoming and a place that they could feel safe. And I'll tell you, the very positive follow-up with Constable Deanna Law, when we had him, until you folks took him from us, Sergeant Dave Salavich worked with the refugees and dealt with a number of issues, just growing pains, and it's been very, very successful, and they've been very well-received by the Syrian community. So, moving forward, as I said at the start, we have strategic priorities. We have a very broad strategic plan, which we shared with Mr. Chung and Your Worship. So, within that, we have a couple of things. We do an annual performance plan, and that comes down from RCMP divisionally, being British Columbia. So, they give us some mandatories, and then we add on. What there is, issues that we try to strategically target and be successful in, on top of the regular day-to-day work. So, the mandatory for this year that was prisoner and cell block performance is, might be news to folks, that our cell block is actually one of the highest-risk areas of policing. The people die in our custody, get hurt in our custody, it's an area of potential conflict. People die in our custody, get hurt in our custody. It's an area of potential conflict. So we are very, very cognizant of managing people, taking care of our prisoners, their medical needs, their psychological needs. So very strict reviews that are in place there. The other one, missing person investigations, that's become very, very topical with the missing and murdered inquiry going on nationally. The RCMP, especially in British Columbia, have really taken robust standards for missing persons investigations that were adopted by the province and are the policing standard everywhere in this province. On top of that, the third category that we've added is violence in relationships, otherwise known as domestic violence investigations, which are high-risk. And we have taken additional steps to deal with those, which I will touch on a little bit in a second here. And again, the, on top of that strategic priority, there's a little bit of overlap here down at the bottom. Four key strategic priorities, domestic violence, enhanced road safety, of course, traffic enforcement, crime reduction hotspots, which I'll touch on, and modernization at the request of Inspector Peter Jadis. In the middle there, policing highlights, there is, this is a section where you really don't want me coming with a lot of stories on a quarterly basis, okay? Which Sergeant Sadou and I were speaking about, I says, yeah, I wish I had, you know, more highlights. And melbatost is kind of what we're looking for with regards to police reporting in any community. So two real issues, one of which I've written about here is, we had the, and this is all captured on a police car video, is hostage situation at the bus loop with a gentleman had his girlfriend at knife point, and our members had deployed to the situation. And very, very impressive how they responded to the situation, trying to defuse the situation, ultimately had to use a conducted energy or a taser on the individual who dropped the knife, and were able to grab the girl away. It was very quick, very dynamic. We were hoping to be able to share that video, but there's, we have to wait for a court situation to be dealt with before we can do anything with that. The other thing, in fairness, is an update on the murder outside of Brown Social House. Of course, IHIHT's taken care of that. The message out of there, Inspector Jadis and I have met with, he's met with some people from Brown's, and we have a continuing relationship with the upper management of Cactus Club. And we're developing and expanding the relationship between the police and those types of restaurants, because we had another one up at, outside of Moxie's up in the township earlier in the year. So they are restaurants that could be locations where incidences take place. It's really unfair to the establishments. They don't want gangsters in their establishments. That's not the business model that is successful long-term. They want decent, family-oriented people that will come again and again. And with that in mind, we're getting a real sense that they want to work with police to make those locations safe as much as they can. And we had a significant presence the weekend after the Browns' unfortunate murder, and it was greatly appreciated by the staff and the patrons at that particular time. So, and I have no significant update on that investigation from IHIHT to report on. So moving forward, just to briefly break down into our domestic violence prevention strategic priority, one of four here. So every, just to see where this detachment, Langley detachment, has taken this, we were looking for the most robust oversight of domestic violence investigations that could be put into place, that doesn't, that closes as many gaps as possible, as quick as possible. So if you imagine two members would go to a domestic situation, let's assume there's violence, there's indicators of violence, and then arrest is made. So they go on with their investigation, and when they're done, their work is reviewed by a corporal at the first instance. So they're looking for quality report completeness. There's 17 different points that have to be addressed in every domestic violence investigations. And if there's a report to Crown, that has to be done before anybody goes home so they can appear either via conference call or head over to court the next day. So that's the standard. What we've put into place is our next level, the sergeants on the general duty watches also are required to review the corporal's review. So we have two layers of review because this is such a high-risk area. And the beauty of having the sergeants on the watches do it, they're there every single day. It's not like we're waiting for a Monday to Friday reviewer to come in to assess because that's, that's when the risk happens, is shortly after an incident. So we built that into place. We have reporting requirements for those sergeants commenting, and that reports back to our senior management team on a monthly basis. And we've kicked that off the last couple of months, and I'm very pleased with the accountability. Now, the proof will be in the pudding when we do an audit of our files, and we have very robust auditing processes. And we won't be able to get some real numbers for a few months until this year really gets rolling with regards to April till March being our year-end. Second area, enhanced road safety, that's pretty much something that goes across the province. A lot of people, you know, think violence, the murder and mayhem are, you know, the greatest killers of people. Usually, it's vehicles and deaths on the roads across the province. The numbers are always staggering, which is why ICPC puts so much money into enforcement efforts. So yeah, enhanced road safety is something that we're very on top of. We're using the volunteer, the speed watch programs to stay on top of everything that we can. We threw in some statistics here. These are just city numbers here with regards to some enforcement. We didn't break down all the different requests that we get from different areas of the city, like Brighton Park, but we do have that information available upon request. One of the other issues that we're trying to educate the public on with all our members is issuing some form of violation ticket at traffic accidents. More often than not, with the exception of weather, somebody is at fault at a traffic accident. And I don't think we do, anybody, insurance providers, the rest of the society, much value if we're not enforcing driving errors at a traffic accident. So that's one of the things that we're trying to increase our attentiveness to, is enforcement at accidents. Area number three of four, just overall, property crime is always a significant topic when we come here. And you've seen this one before. This is all of Langley, and this is all property crime offenses. The red line is the five-year average, so we're shooting to be below the red line. And we've had, it was a rough year last year. We're starting to finally trend in the right direction. And it doesn't take too many effective arrests to start taking these numbers down. There's a lot of proactive work, and the narrative on this page, it does touch on the fact that we cover over 300 street checks on a monthly basis. That's getting out of the car and checking the people wandering the streets, usually in the middle of the night. We're also expanding upon that into many more curfew checks. The biggest deterrent that we get with regards to the low-end property offenders are a curfew. So it's fine that the court issues them a curfew not to be out of their house after 10:00 PM, but we go and knock on the door once, sometimes twice a night, to make sure that they are home. Failure to be home will result in a forwarding of a proposed charge for breach of probation order or release condition. So very, very effective, and when you show up on a regular basis, the offenders, they get the message, and they start to stay in their house instead of wandering the streets. So overall, we're heading, again, trending in a good direction. As I've told you before, you can never, you know, continually go down with regards to property crime. It's going to hit a floor and then bounce back up. That's just a fact. And our prolific offender suppression team, those are the ones that I think you folks appreciate the most. They're on the bikes. They're dealing with the prolific offenders. They're in their face. They deal with them on a regular basis. They'll work plainclothes. They'll work uniform. They'll wear, you know, bike clothes, whatever. So they're regularly out there dealing with offenders on the street of all natures. Leave this with you again. Standard chart, member green is good, and this is city numbers only, year-over-year. I'll just draw your attention to a couple of numbers of the decreasing area. Of course, you know, homicide, zero to one, of course, you get 100% increase, so it's low numbers. Assaults are up, and not surprising, we've had such a steady decline in violent crime of assaults. So I think we were due for a bit of a bump there. Going down, this is significant reduction here. Ninety-one business break-in enters last year, and I don't know if you recall, we got hit pretty hard. So we've had some success through various means of really reducing the business numbers. Auto theft, unfortunately, taking a jump back up in the city. And theft from auto, on the other side, good news, is coming down again. So a bit of a wash with regards to where we're going. And this is for your perusal later on, this and the next page. This is a city-t township comparison by percentages with regards to whether crime is up or down, okay? So the white would be down, and the reds are up, and I'll leave that for you folks to digest at your leisure. This, again, is one to digest because it's an awful lot of information. But what it does, it tells you the actual number of incidences instead of just percentages. So just to take you across one line, break-in enters, 667 year-to-date. This year, 542 year-to-date, so a reduction of 19%. Then we have a city percentage of that, and then a township percentage of that. So it breaks down all three in real numbers and real percentages. So there for you to digest at your leisure. And mail theft, we take those numbers with a grain of salt because there wasn't long-term reporting on mail theft. But again, that hasn't, that really has dissipated significantly from what we had a few years ago. And the most recent trend for mail theft came from apartment block, mailboxes being attacked from within. So we talked about hitting up our, you know, stratas and apartment buildings to really harden those local mailboxes. Drug offenses, drug numbers are always hard to get your head around. Really, the bottom line is, what you need to know is our drug section is very engaged with a lot of successes, some of which we can't report at this point in time. But what you need to know is that some car fentanyl, which is that one that's 100 or 1,000 times more toxic, more potent than fentanyl, has been identified in some drugs that were seized in Langley. So car fentanyl is here, unfortunately, and that's going to increase risk levels for users, first frontline officers alike. And finally, on modernization, what we'll report on, and Sergeant Sadou and I were talking about, different issues that we can report on. One in particular, it's a real success story within the detachment. It might not mean much to you folks. It took a long time, but we have seven large TV monitors strategically placed around the detachment. And it really, it shares an abundance of information with regards to member information. And remember, this is inside the detachment, so we have running pictures of who's wanted, suspect people information, health issues, community interest issues, on and on. Really, it's the limit of our imagination as to what it's used for, but the members have really caught on, and there's a lot of good information being shared in a new modem for the detachment. Instead of just getting a bunch of emails, we have a member that just constantly updates this, our TV program, and it's really, really quite successful. So it's a really significant step forward, and others that have visited our detachment from others have noticed it and really thought it was quite good. Just a bit of, three different ways to look at some numbers here. And this first one is, it's quarter-over-quarter for the last six months. So a quarter is a three-month period, so we have January to March 2017, April to June 2017. So it takes the first three months, compares it to the next three months, and we have a reduction of 24% for auto theft, 49% for break-in enters. So that's just one category. This one is a year-to-date, 2016 to 2017, straight up. And again, good numbers for reduction. Sorry, we'll just back that one up there. Person's violent crime, that goes back to that assault one that I mentioned on the previous page, is the only one that's really up of any significance. And this is a third way to look at things, and it's April, the same quarter from 2017, from 2016 to 2017. My eyes are going. I thought it was an eight instead of a six. So just three different ways, and again, I'll leave this with you folks to digest. And no bad news to report there. Everybody loves a pie chart. This just breaks down the actual number of occurrences for the entire detachment. So you have, so it just gives you a sense, 2,000 property offenses for the detachment is a significant portion for the crime, other criminal code, and then we have, you know, that aren't property offenses, so you have your, violent offenses would be in there. Person's offenses, or I should say, the violent offenses will be up here in the person's offenses. So a nice narrow band for person offenses is always good. Traffic violations, provincial statutes, CDSA, that's drugs. And then this 4,700, other different types of occurrences, whether it be mental health, assist GP, suspicious occurrence, stuff that just doesn't fit into the previous categories. So just a different way to break down the types of files that we get at the detachment. Up next, you hear about hotspot policing, and we've always shown the hotspot map, but we're going to do it a little differently this time because I think it's always been difficult to narrow down the city hotspot because we use all of Langley. So I asked Sergeant Sadou to come up with just a city hotspot map, and it was much more appealing because it doesn't paint as bad a picture as it looked when you look at the entire, all of the Langley. So really, Douglas Crescent here, no surprise where the activity is really in the core area. There's all your residential area, very quiet with regards to crime. So we're on the right track. We know where we should be. This confirms where we should be. And kind of tells you what you already knew with regards to your hotspot within the city itself. And then if you take the city out of the township one, and then just highlights the township hotspots. And of course, the 200 street corridor, just with the growth up in Walner Grove here. And Alder Grove will ebb and flow with regards to how things are going there. And the final document, or the final page of the report, just total calls for service. So this gives you city last year, 15,600 calls for service, the township, 32,000. And then in 2017, just the year-to-date calls for service so far. And then on top of that, founded general occurrences, which are explained at the bottom. And the last thing, criminal record checks, 2017, quite a few criminal record checks, as you can see, and disclosure requests for insurance companies and information of the sort. So that, your worship and council, is, this quarter's more fulsome report than what we've done previously. So I'm open to questions at this point in time.
Are you out of breath?
Not too bad. I was looking for a glass of water when I started, but we're doing okay.
Nathan, Counselor Pahal.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for this report. This is certainly a lot more thorough than previous ones, so great effort there. Just a couple clarification, really, just for me on the table. So on page 11, and I'm sure I know the answer to this, but I just wanted to make sure. So 2016, so that is April, June 2016 in the leftmost column, and then April, June 2017 on the second to the left column, which matches up to the second to last column?
So we're talking about the top chart here?
Yeah, yeah, the top chart. So it says Q1 year-over-year, 2016, I'm assuming that's April to June?
Same quarter, year-over-year.
And your quarter one is April to June, yeah. And then the one on that's just the Q4 of 2016. So you can match the quarter-to-quarter and then previous quarter-to-quarter, okay? The other question I have is, a lot of the stuff, when you hear from folks, it's when they have an experience with someone break-in enter or whatnot, is what resources are available, and what things do we have to help the communities feel that sense of security? And what sort of programs are you putting in or that the city can do to help facilitate community safety, the perception of safety, and people feeling safe in their neighborhoods? I mean, the statistics tell one story, but perception tells another, right?
Yeah, and you know, we've been talking about that for years, is fighting the perception battle with regards to crimes, specifically in the city. battle with regards to crimes specifically in the city. It is, it's a city, you know, it is what it is. So what we, what people have to do, what the citizens have to do is really use us more, as you're alluding to, counselor, is you have your home broken into, you know, which is devastating enough, and it's the ultimate, you know, right from the Supreme Court of Canada, the ultimate violation is someone's home, you know, outside of their personal being. And we take that very seriously with regards to police authority to enter to a home. We have to remember that same standard, it's because it's not the police coming, that people are really affected by their home being entered into. And what we do have in places, we do have not only just our victim services program, but we do have within our community police section, the ability, whether it be auxiliaries or trained municipal employees, that will come to your home and do an assessment to see if there's anything that can be better with regards to how your house is set up with, you know, for safety, for visibility, and all those issues. So on a two-pronged front between victim services, staying in touch with the investigator if there is follow-up conversation required, and using our resources to assess your home is definitely something that is underutilized at the detachment.
Just one quick follow-up question. If someone was interested in getting information about a home inspection and figuring out what can be done, what would be the best course of action?
Contact the detachment, ask for the community policing section, and they will take you from there.
At the non-emergency number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you. Thanks for the report, it was great. This might be a personal little bug of mine, but in regards to your enhanced road safety, when we had the community meeting at Brookswood, I mentioned to one of your traffic officers, because he stopped me outside, about 208th Street. Several years ago, at 208th and Grade, we put in a flashing yellow light because people were concerned about the traffic, the speed. Then we, a few years later, we installed a reader board for mileage, for how fast you're going. I can honestly say, and I use 208th a lot because I come from my son's place, that every time I go down there, cars are going between sixty-five and ninety kilometers an hour down the hill. Now, I realize it's a hill, but I can keep my car at fifty kilometers. And maybe we don't get a lot of complaints because there's not a lot of houses facing 208th Street until you get further down by, well, there isn't a lot of houses, period, facing 208th Street. But it is, to me, a speeding Mecca. And even though we haven't got a lot of complaints, and you do identify where the public has complained, I don't think they are complaining because there isn't a lot of houses. But I'd really like to see your spotting scope on that hill. You guys could make a fortune, trust me, you could. So, and you know, and there may not be a lot of accidents, but the high rate of speed astounds me when I travel that section.
Yeah, I think your, I think your point is founded in fact, counselor. If I recall from our Langley City Town Hall, we did more talking about 208th than any other topic that evening. So it was very topical. Maybe, you may have hit on why we don't get the calls, it's because people don't live there.
Right.
And that's when we get the genuine public interest. But we both made a note of it, and we'll, you know, speak with Sergeant Mulva Hill and her team and put it into their project list.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Storybo.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Superintendent. I really appreciate the report. It's much more involved and got a lot of great information. And, but the numbers are terrific. It's a really great quarter. Your people are doing a terrific job for us. I can't thank you enough for, you know, the professionalism and the heart that you bring to what you do, to protect us and to serve our community. And I just want to say that I look forward to the opportunity to connect with the detachment and do right along this summer. So if we can make those arrangements, I'd really appreciate that.
Yes, we can definitely do that. I really do appreciate your comments. The, I think we're really blessed with an outstanding detachment, the members that come there every day, they really are committed. They're just a great young and old mix of quality people, I'm very proud of them. As I've said to you folks in other venues, I think we're one of the luckier detachments in Lower Mainland. And we'll keep pushing to serve as best as we possibly can, but I will definitely take your comments back to the troops.
Well, so you guys did a great job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. He's not going to bug you this time. He's saving it. No, Murray, I'd like to thank you and your staff for coming out this evening, and it's great to get the information. It's not always information that we want to hear, but that's the fact of life of what's going on out there and the reality of life as well. So again, thank you very much. And I know you guys are going to be out there on Counselor Martin's Hill, so stay away from 208th, right? So.
Maybe we'll rename it after the end of the project.
Yeah. Well, thank you once again.
Thank you, your worship.
Next item we have is Fire Chief Rory Thompson, who's here and not in Hundred Mile House. And I guess he's pretty happy about that part being here. So this is the Langley City Fire Rescue Quarterly Update.
Okay, thank you, your worship, members of council. First of all, I have to apologize, this is under the old template, so we'll make sure we get that fixed for the next quarterly meeting. Okay, our call statistics relatively unchanged for the first and second. I'm going to cover the first and second quarters of this year because we didn't have an update yet this year. So pretty steady, there's no significant trends to note at this point. And of course, our medical calls, as always, continue to be a majority of the calls that we look after. Second is public service and usually alarms and fire coming in about fourth for the number of runs that we do. So drug overdoses, this continues to be a significant events for us. It continues to grow in terms of the number of calls. So we're getting close over, say, a two-year period of having about a five-hundred percent increase in the number of overdoses that we've responded to. So we started out in 2015, we had eighty overdoses. Last year, we had two hundred and twenty-eight. And so far this year, I think we're up around a hundred and seventy-eight to date. So it's continuing to climb for us. Interesting to note that according to Fraser Health, seventy percent, thereabouts, of the overdose visits to the ER, those patients have a home. So seventy percent are actually have a home, you know, either within the city or within the township. Significant fires that we've had so far this year. February the ninth, there was a electrical, a major electrical fault at the Canadian Tire Store on 200th Street. Had some circuits arced over, which created a fire not only inside the electrical vault, but just started to spread a little bit into the Safeway store. And it affected all those businesses kind of in and around Safeway because the main electrical feed for that whole complex actually comes through the Safeway store. So that there were probably about a dozen stores that were without power, probably for about a twenty-four hour period. So there's about a three-hundred thousand dollar loss with that. On the seventh, there is a fire at the Signature Club Suites on Douglas Crescent. And that was a fire that was contained by the sprinkler system. But still, that there was a significant bit of water damage before the sprinkler system was turned off. So there's about two-hundred and seventy thousand dollars there. The Birch Building Fire on, for the Lyons seniors facility. So that's the one unfortunate where we had a fatality with that fire. And that's one point nine five million dollar loss for that fire. College Manor over Glover Road, that's where we responded to a report of an explosion. When we got there, we found that there is a butane hash oil facility going on there. So they actually take marijuana leaves and they flow butane down through it and extract hash oil out of that. So this is the second one that we had. We had one over in Paddington not too long ago, I think about a year ago or so. So this one was pretty violent. It actually affected surrounding rooms, and it blew out the window in the front of the store, and there's a large fireball which passersby noted. Fortunately, there was no substantial fire damage within the suite. There's a lot of structural damage that had to be assessed. And I think the only recently that they've managed to move back into that facility. And of course, the fire that we had here last month on the Langley bypass at the wholesale auto source. And that is coming in right now at about a million dollars. So that's what the losses have looked at. So six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for the first quarter with one injury, and that injury was a smoke inhalation as a result of a cooking stove top fire. And of course, we had the one death over at the Lyons facility. And so our second quarter total loss was about three million dollars. Training that we've accomplished in the first half this year. So all the members of the department have been trained in giving out the lock zone. We ran a senior incident safety officer course, and that was a course that we managed to get that was free of charge from the Justice Institute because this was the first time that they were running the course. So with Scott Kennedy's connection with the JI, he managed to line us up as the test facility for this. So we had the first offering of that, and we were able to offer feedback to the course. And it was primarily an online course. RIT Level Two training, so that's the Rapid Intervention Team. So that fulfills our requirements under the worksafe legislation. So if any of the firefighters get into trouble, then we do have trained firefighters on the outside, we're able to go in and assist them and get them out. So again, that is something that Scott Kennedy managed to put together for us. So we're really quite pleased with that because it's a four-day course. It's two, two different levels, a two-day Level One course and a two-day Level Two course. And I think that this training that we've managed to put on for both our career and POC firefighters is probably better than anyone else is putting on in the region for RIT training. We have some new first responder instructors to take the place of several of our instructors. Both Terry Alkembrack and Brent Morgan have retired, so we replaced them. We've carried on with some live fire training and of course, driver training for repeat-on-call firefighters. So that's an ongoing thing. And that's my first and second quarter reports.
Thank you. Boy, you're off the hook, there's nothing there. Just like to thank you Rory and for your presentation. And again, to the crews that are always out there fighting those fires. I know the one on the bypass was an interesting one where they drove a big truck into that dealership. So again, thank you very much. Next item we have is our Communications Officer Samantha Paulson. And she's going to give us a bit of an update on our Langley City spotlights. As we're getting all set up, takes a few minutes to change over from one system to
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Don't forget to get close to the mic, very, very close.
I'm here today to announce our Langley City Spotlights promotion. It's, and we're promoting The Place To Be. The city engaged video production agencies to redevelop The Place To Be video. We have taken that and incorporated twenty-four city spotlights, which are mini videos, thirty seconds to one minute long, which we will be releasing two times a month. And then in, we will also have a five to six-minute video and a condensed two-minute video. They will be shared on our digital assets, which include Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, and eventually on the website as well. The people that I'd like to present to yourselves and the community is BF Video Productions. He's here with me today.
Your worship and councilman, and thank you for your time. And yes, we've taken on this project, and we're excited about helping the city of Langley and The Place To Be. And so far, you've found the people very receptive and friendly, and your community, yes, it's a very nice community. And I really enjoy being there. I think I even came up to his worship there at the community days, and I was commenting as just kids and play, and it's very positive, very healthy. And I'm certainly enjoying working here. Thank you.
So as you see, we have given them Langley City staff shirts and lanyards. So when they are out in the community, people will recognize them and see them and see that they're working on behalf of Langley City. We will be shooting city spotlights throughout the year until June 30th, 2018. These mini spotlights will also serve to produce our five to six-minute video as well as condensed version. The city spotlights we've done so far, we've already released the Oh Canada on Canada Day, and then we have a number of them that you see here. We will also be working with businesses, people like yourselves, and other initiatives in the city. We're also going to be doing Bard in the Valley and Arts Live. So now I want to reveal one epis, excuse me, one spotlight, and it will be the Penzer
This has been keeping you busy, Andrew?
Oh, yes.
Well, it went from dirt to this. You know, it went from a great vision, it went from something that wasn't even on the horizon, you know, a year and a half ago, to this fantastic facility.
I am, I am so impressed by how many people are out here doing actual parkour on this park. I did not believe that it would happen when I came out here. I thought there would just be some kids like climbing around but not actually doing that much. They are, they are loving this park, and they're using it so well. I'm so impressed.
Just like gymnastics, yeah. But this is cool because you don't need specialized equipment and obstacles and structures, right? You can go out to a park and use a garden ledge.
And the city is still debt-free. You know, that's a very important part of this whole program.
The park is amazing. This is such a unique opportunity to be able to work on something that is.
This is the best one so far, absolutely. There's no question. It's huge. What a community in motion.
Langley is the place to be. My name is Gerard Neef, I live about three blocks away from here, and I think it's an amazing opportunity for myself and my granddaughter.
If you're from Chilliwack or Abbotsford or Seattle, you should absolutely come to see this park. It is one of the best parkour parks in, certainly in North America, if not the world. I say to boot. I say to boot.
And this park is for all ages. You know, I can't reiterate that enough. You know, from the little ones to the older ones, to those that really want to get into fitness, those that are kind of just starting off. What a great place to be. Well, it went from dirt to this. Yeah, it went from dirt to this. It wasn't even on the horizon a little while ago, and this council decided to put a lot of money into parks and recreation this year. This council is so positive when it comes out to working with the parks team. This council is so positive when it comes out to working with the parks team. And I think the budget proves that point. So it's a great video. Thank you, Andrew. And Angela, who's your behind-the-scenes person, she's actually behind the scenes right now.
She controls the whole thing.
Yeah. So council members, Councillor Albrecht.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a great idea. Thank you Samantha and your team for doing this. I know that the downtown merchants have done a little video vignettes that have been very successful and really connected with a lot of their users and potential customers. So I think this can be a really, really valuable tool to make the city of Langley the place to be.
Further, Councillor Vandenberg.
I love, 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 love it. Thank you for doing this and going forward with it. Unfortunately, I couldn't be at Penzer Park opening, but seeing that video really gave me a true feeling of how it was to be there. I was at my nephew's graduation, so I missed out on it. And that video just really shows everybody being so happy and excited about it. So yeah, thank you. Really, really appreciate it.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say to Andrew that I think sometimes you remind me of a bunny rabbit, because all the events that I've been at, that you've been at, it's like, there he is again. I mean, you're hopping from sort of venue to venue, and it's wonderful because that's when you capture all the things that are going around. And they may not be in this short 30-second video. They may be in the longer one, but it's truly amazing how you sort of see something, and you're there, and you're filming it. So I think this is going to be very, very successful. And thank you Samantha for bringing this on, and Andrew and your partner. It's going to be great for the city of Langley. Thank you.
Councillor Stortebloom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I think it's very innovative and clever. I think it's on the leading edge of, you know, promoting ourselves, which we should. And I think it was well done. This presentation that you gave this evening, it was, had more volume. And I picked up stuff that I had not heard before, including the music in the background. So I think it's really important not just to get the message out with the videos, but with the dialogue and the soundtrack. So thank you. It's a great program. You've done a wonderful job, and it's really super working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your presentation, Samantha. And maybe you could arrange with Andrew and Angela to go to Linwood, one of Councillor Martin's favorite spots, and check out that zip line there. So maybe in the next month or so, we could have that on there as well. And it's great. You're doing a great job promoting the city. And thank you to Andrew and Angela for putting it all together. It's not an easy task when you've got a lot of footage. So thank you again, and look forward to the next one on Linwood.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Arnold.
I've already been on all night. Okay. Yeah, it's, all of the events, it's been amazing just watching you hopping around there and getting shots of people's feet and when they're dancing, and all sorts of things. And I noticed the mayor mentioned the zip line at Linwood. And that was the one thing I kept hearing at Penzer, was everybody saying, oh, when are we getting a zip line here? So I don't know if we're going to have to take a look at that pretty soon or what, but it was a great, great opening. Just watching the people hop from the one thing to the next, and I had all I could do to stand up, never mind jumping up on anything. But boy, I'll tell you, they were just really enjoying themselves.
Thank you, Councillor Arnold. Well, until next time.
Thank you.
So the next item is the mayor's report. Regular council meeting, next one is July 24th. The one after that is September 11th. Councillor Stortebloom, do you have anything for Metro Vancouver?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, yeah, finally, summer is here. It's wonderful. It's been worth the wait. With the warmer temperatures, we can expect Metro Vancouver to be issuing air quality advisories for the region from time to time, as higher concentrations of ground-level ozone are more likely to persist. Plus, this stretch of good weather should serve to remind us all of the potential threat for wildfires in the green spaces and forested lands that are in our region. Further, please be reminded that Bayswater restrictions continue for our region. Metro Vancouver is developing a strategy to manage abandoned waste that is being dumped in our streets and alleyways, as well as taking initial steps to upgrade the Iona wastewater treatment plant to secondary treatment, and considering our involvement in the province's energy step code that will introduce efficiency measures to make all new buildings in the region net-zero energy-ready by 2032. And they already have this in the state of California set for 2020. At the Climate Action Committee, there were three delegations from local residents who expressed their well-researched concerns about the air quality permit applications for the two new facilities at Suris Campbell Heights Industrial Park. At our next meeting, I will be reporting to the group about the recent electric vehicle conference that I attended in Markham, Ontario. And that is my report.
Thank you, Councillor Stortebloom.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Baumhoff, Director of Engineering Parks and Environment, to give us an engineering update.
All right. Thank you very much. Update for July. So first up is the topical project, Penzer Park. The Action Park grand opening was June 29th. And as an engineering Parks and Environment Department, it's always very satisfying when you construct a project and you see that kind of reception from the public. It was a great event to participate in. So just a few shots of people in the sports box and in the bike pump track, as well as the parkour site, our facility, and the kids' climbing playground. Also, we've installed some of the new pole-mounted ashtrays. We're doing five in the city center, just as a pilot, and see how they're received. This one's on Douglas. We are beginning the 200th Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project. That bridge deck, the bridge deck will be replaced, and the bridge will also be seismically upgraded. The project will take place from July to October of this year. And during the construction, there will be single-lane traffic in each direction. The one sidewalk will be open at all times, and there will be signage at both sides for pedestrians to cross the street in a safe manner. Also, the water main will be replaced from the bridge to 50th Avenue, along with further patching and paving on 200th Street, south of the bridge to 50th, and that will be scheduled to coincide with the bridge works to minimize disruption. Current projects that we're working on in construction is the Spray Park expansion at City Park. We have installed a new manifold at the Spray Park. And once the weather, if we, once we get to a couple of days of poor weather and maybe minimal usage, we're going to put the new manifold in place and so that we can shut it, shut the system down so we can do the expansion without impacting the existing Spray Park. So that will be happening as soon as we can. And Hunter Park redevelopment is happening currently. The contractor that was doing the Penzer Park project has now moved to Hunter Park. So that is being actively redeveloped. Also, the Portage Park picnic shelter has been ordered, and that picnic shelter will be installed as soon as it comes in, in stock. The Newlands Drive, 200th Street, 10th Street, storm sewer installation and water main replacement and paving is being, is underway. Also, the 56th Avenue Glover Road to Langley Bypass road construction project is also actively underway. The main section being worked on is the section between Glover and 206th, which is a priority to finish that section first before moving on, on the road section between 206th to Langley Bypass. Also, the Douglas Park fitness equipment is being installed. The concrete was poured last week and is being cured. There were some, the bark mulch sawdust was placed around the bases, and the equipment will go in in a few days once the concrete is cured properly. Also, the Baldy Creek culvert replacement is underway. The contractor, contract has been awarded. It's just a matter of time before they schedule the work to actually begin. So that is Baldy Creek at 53rd Avenue area. Of course, I mentioned the 200th Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, and also the 200th Street Water Main Replacement from the Bridge to 50th. And that's my report. Thank you.
Questions? Councillor Pahal.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the update. I just wanted to point out, and you can please pass this on to your parks staff and management, that I've lived here for a little over a decade now, and the condition of our parks this year is something that I've never seen since I've lived here. So the amount of just keeping it up is fantastic, the new facilities that have been built this year, and also the boulevards, there's been a marked improvement on the maintenance of those as well. So please pass that along. It's looking fantastic.
Thank you. Councillor Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Baumhoff. I just wanted to say that you and your staff have really got an ambitious plan here for this year. And I really appreciate the time, energy, and effort that everyone is putting in to try to achieve such an ambitious plan. So guys are doing a great job. And like Councillor Pahal says, I couldn't be more proud to be a member of Langley City team. So it's, this is, this is really, really showing well on our community. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Further, I know you've been really involved with the parquet systems. That's the little quiet spots, for lack of wording, on the Fraser Highway. You're going to be looking into putting those in. And too bad you didn't have a couple of photos of the ones that you will be doing there. I know you've been behind the scenes quite a bit. Other people have been working along with it. You've been taking Mr. Chung's slides and dissecting them, bisecting them, and trying to make it fit into our community. So I know you and your staff have been hard at it. So look forward to the little parquetts that you're going to be having.
I'll maybe bring a slide next time on that, for sure.
Yeah, on July 24th.
Yes.
On our last one. So that would be great. And your staff have been out there. It's been very hot, you know, and when you're out there with a mower or weed eater, you get pretty nasty there for a while. And the parkour park is nothing but positive out there. So the entire team that's been working on this, the only thing that I noticed as I was getting hot was something to sit on out there. Plus, being a grandpa cost me a pair of sneakers. You know that, don't you? So, and I've got another two that I'm going to want some sneakers too for this. But anyway, it's great.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, actually, you meant, you triggered something when you mentioned the picnic or the benches. And we do have plans still to put in additional picnic benches. We're going to be pouring some concrete slabs before the benches come in. And also, we're planning, because it's so successful, currently, we're having issues keeping up with the Johnny on the spots, keeping them in a clean fashion. So we're going to be bumping that up to twice a week. And it's clear that we likely will need some new facilities there. So that'll be, we'll be looking into that for next year's consideration, as well as parking, whether we'll be able to extend the parking lot area where it is, or possibly adding parking across the street. We'll look into all of that, just in terms of the neighborhood, if they're wondering how this is all, you know, until you actually see the success of it, you don't necessarily know what's needed next. So we are looking into that.
Just ask Councillor Martin for a suggestion on a washroom facility. I'm quite sure she's got one out there.
Yes.
But again, thank you very much. I know this council was at the park festivities that Christian Life Assembly had, and they gave to the city a beautiful picnic table, and they donated that to the city for their 80th anniversary of being here in the community. And, you know, if you don't have a spot for this picnic bench at Douglas Park, you know, maybe the parkour park could use it as a temporary one. But all of council was there, and we appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. We saw what was happening at Douglas Park, too. So that outdoor fitness is going to be something else as well. So I'd be, I don't know if you've got the before and after pictures, maybe take, you know, a few photos of it, you know, from just from the grass to what it's got and what it will be.
Yeah, we'll do that. Yeah. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much. Next item we have is Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture, and Community Services.
Well, good evening, Your Worship and members of council. The update for Recreation, Culture, and Community Services for both July and August. As you can imagine, these are some of our busiest months for special events in Langley City, both downtown and in some of our parks. And this is a particular booklet that we produce, an update regularly as we run out of them, to keep everything relevant and current inside. And you can pick these up in any of our recreation facilities, whether it's Douglas Rec Center, Tim's, Allen Anderson Memorial Pool. And I know members of council were handing these out also at our grand opening at Penzer. So people have an opportunity to view this online as well. So I've just picked a few of our highlights for the summer because I couldn't possibly spend too much time doing all of the events. But the first one that comes to mind is our legendary water fight. And that's where the public verse the firefighters. And the theme, of course, is, you can see, Star Wars. And it's going to be an epic aquatic showdown. And that's on July the 15th, so this weekend, coming out from 1:00 to 4:00. It is $5 per person, and you can buy tickets in advance. And this is always a sellout. And given the weather that's coming forth, I think everyone would be wanting to be in the water and getting wet. Also at the pool is our annual Jaws dive-in movie. Again, another favorite amongst children and their parents. They get to watch a scary Jaws movie while floating in the water. And we may have characters underwater to tickle your feet as you're watching. And this is on August the 12th from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. And again, it's $5 per person. Ticket sales are ongoing, and you can phone 604-514-2860, which is Allen Anderson Pool, to get your tickets today. We just finished having our first movie in the park this past weekend, and our next one is now scheduled for August the 18th. And this is more of a family, a whole-family event with Moana. I haven't seen this movie, but I've heard rave reviews. This is a free event. Bring your blankets, bring some snacks. We have a concession available as well. And quite often, it's also paired up with a dancing event prior to. So that's Movie in the Park and August the 18th. Now, obviously, we have a lot of events, so your key point to go to is our City of Langley website, city.langley.bc.ca/events. You'll find our Sounds of Summer, the McBurney Plaza Summer Series, the Bopin' in the Park, plus a whole lot more, such as the Bard in the Park, dancing, concerts, the whole bit. So that is your go-to for events in the city of Langley. Now on to some programs. We have a number of programs that are run through the course of the summer. And this is a free community walking program. And it runs on Mondays and Thursdays. On Mondays, it's based out of Douglas Park, and on Thursdays, it's based out of Brydon Park. We have a leader there that will bring you on one of many different walks using our wonderful trail system that we have in the city of Langley. For more information on the walks, you can phone 604-514-2865. Moving on to our push-play program. This has been running for a few years now. This particular program runs, let me see here, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And it's based out of Douglas Park. It goes from 9:30 to 11:30, and it's a free event for the whole family. There's loads of activities planned, games and crafts. And we've had a great reception to date, and it's ongoing right through the end of August. New this year is our Creative Kids Program. And this program is also a free drop-in, and it's based out of McBurney Plaza. It's one of the new programs that the city is offering. And it's running Wednesdays and Fridays. And again, it's from 9:30 to 11:30. And in a couple of weeks' time, we'll be expanding it further with a piano... a couple of weeks' time, we'll be expanding it further with a piano that people can pop down and play, added picnic tables, some chess games, chess games and, chess games and other activities as well. And we'll have a leader there to supervise as well. So, that's in McBurney Plaza on Wednesdays and Fridays. We have several different camps running in addition to our main summer fantastic day camp. We have this Bricks for Kids Lego Program, and that's running July 17th to 21st, from 12:30 to 3:30 at Tim's Community Center. To register or find out more information, you can phone 604-514-2940. We also offer a Drama, Games, and Fun Camp. This is also running similar times, July 17th to 21st, again, from 12:30 to 3:30. And this is co-run with a group called PLAY. So, for more information, you can phone 604-514-2940. So, now back on to our athletic side of things, indoor soccer half-day camp. We have two different camps running this year. One running July 17th to 21st. The second option is August the 14th to the 18th. So, don't worry, if you're away on holidays on one offering, you can certainly sign up for the other. And that's 9:00 a.m. to noon. And again, that's at Tim's Community Center. We also are offering a Sports and Swim Action Camp. The kids in the City of Langley will be totally engaged in activities all summer long with all the programs we have. And this program runs from July 17th to 21st, or August 14th to 18th. And it's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and it's based out of our sports box. And of course, using the outdoor pool as well. For more information on that, you can phone 604-514-2940. And a volleyball half-day camp. Again, we have two offerings, July 24th to 28th, or August 21st to 25th. And this is 9:00 a.m. to noon downstairs in our beautiful gym at Tim's Community Center. And there's still room available, so don't delay. Register today for one of these two offerings. And a basketball half-day camp. I suspect this one is going to go pretty quick, because basketball is quite popular here at the community center. But this is a program that runs August the 8th to 11th, from 9 till noon. So, for more information on that, or any of our programs, you can phone 604-514-2940. And that's our update for activities in the City of Langley.
Questions? Counselor Pahal.
I normally don't speak at all of these, so it's an exception this time. But I just wanted to call out that we are trying to build a great community, and building a great community means investing in public spaces. And we've seen that in our engineering update. And equally important is that investment in programming those public spaces, which you and your team are doing. And so, that's noticed. And the kind of events we're seeing over the last year is just really fantastic, engaging in the community. We can see people coming out, rediscovering that public space, bringing positive activity, and really reclaiming that and building that sense of community. So, it's great that we're doing this, and I look forward to see this continuing. So, thank you.
Thank you. There's certainly a great diversity of opportunities, cultural, sports-based, or just fun activities. So, it's, it's great for the community.
Further? Well, I just jotted down August 8th to 11th, because grandpa and grandma are going to be looking after a couple of kids. So, that's a basketball camp that, that gives grandma and grandpa some free time. Not that I mind. But again, thank you for putting everything together. You know, it takes quite a team, you know. As one individual, you're just the front person, but you've got a multitude of people helping to put it all together. And I congratulate you for, for being so successful. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
The last item I have under Mayor's Report is that Shaw TV will be winding down its local broadcasting operations in the greater Vancouver area. An effective August the 15th, 2017, will no longer provide coverage of Langley City Council meetings. However, Langley City Council meetings can be viewed at any time through the city's webcasting service. This live streaming service allows you to watch council meetings as they happen, or at your convenience, anytime after the meeting. And Langley City has provided this service since December 2012, and all meetings since are available on the city's website. So, it's just a little bit of public info that Shaw is winding down.
Question?
Counselor Stortebum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, and this would probably be to staff. It's just, I can't help but wonder now that we're going to be just doing the online streaming for council webcast. Is there any way to measure if anybody's watching? I mean, you can get hits to a website. You can find out how many people have gone there and looked at a Facebook page or what have you. Is there any way we can track whether or not we're actually making connection there? If people are watching, that sort of thing?
Hi, through the Chair and Counselor Stortebum. I can check with our provider and find out if there's a way we can get statistics reported on that.
Okay, because if we're getting a lot of hits, maybe we could, you know, enhance the quality or something like that, to make it a more user-friendly feature. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just gave Counselor Pahal the opportunity, but he's going to defer to staff. So, the next item we have is transitioning Langley City Fire Services to the ECOM radio system, and our fire chief is going to make her presentation. And you have Mike Webb with you? Hello there.
Hi.
Rory, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can you come with me?
Okay, thank you. The report that's before you this evening is, is to set up the transition of Langley City Fire Rescue Services from our current radio system, where we're operating under an old repeater on top of the casino, to the new ECOM radio system. And as you know, we're funding for this project, operation funding was approved in this year's budget. And in order for Langley City to get on to the ECOM radio system and start using it, there's two things that have to happen. First of all, that the city purchase a Class A share in ECOM, and that has to be enacted through a bylaw process according to their regulations. And the purchased share cost is $10. And also, that the city authorizes the CAO to execute the agreement to be bound on behalf of the city. And that just says that even though you've got the share, there's still a user or a members agreement in how ECOM operates, and how the governance works, and all that sort of stuff. And that just commits the, the city to operate under the same rules and regulations that all other user municipalities operate under. So, I have here this evening Mike Webb, who is the Vice President of Technology Services for ECOM, and also Dave Mitchell, the Director of Fire Services. And they will give you a presentation, and then answer any questions that you have about the ECOM radio system and about the governance. So, take it away, please.
Thank you, Chief Thompson. Good evening, Your Worship and Members of Council, City Staff. I'd like to give a brief overview of ECOM, what we are as an organization, what we do, the services that we provide. And I will touch briefly on just a couple of the points that Chief Thompson spoke to with respect to the governance structure and the related matters to do with acquisition of a share in ECOM. So, about ECOM, I'll skip ahead here. So, ECOM is an organization that consists of around 425, 450 staff, all of which are dedicated to the provision of public safety communication services. So, our vision is safer communities in British Columbia through excellence in public safety communications. Our mission is to deliver exceptional emergency communication services that help save lives and protect property, and to advance public safety partnerships. And our, our staff, as I mentioned, both within the department that I run, which is the Technology Services Organization, and then the, the group that, of course, operates the Communication Services of ECOM, dispatch and 911 services, as well as all the support staff of ECOM, you know, we value respect, accountability, collaboration, integrity, and, and service. As I said, we're a very dedicated organization to really protecting the citizens and property of, within British Columbia. There are four basic areas of service that we provide, the wide-area radio network in right up there, which I'll come back to talking about. My department also provides a number of mission-critical technology services that support primarily first responder operations, police, fire, and ambulance operations in the lower mainland and across British Columbia. I mentioned our Operations Department that provides police and fire call-taking and dispatch services, and then primary 911 call-answer services. We currently answer roughly about 88% of the 911 calls in British Columbia, and that number will continue to increase. It will be approaching 100% over the next 18 months or so, as we expand our operations actually to the lower Vancouver Island area as well. Just very quickly, with respect to police dispatch, one of the largest services that we provide, the jurisdictions in blue are the police jurisdictions in Metro Vancouver that we provide police dispatch for. We also do police dispatching to the province in the Sea de Sky and Sunshine Coast regions. And similarly, there are a number of jurisdictions in Metro Vancouver and in the same rural areas that we also provide fire dispatching for. But that's not what we're here to talk about today. We're actually here to talk about the wide-area radio network. And just to give you a bit of a sense, the network really that we own and operate is a very large capital asset. It consists of a number of radio transmission towers, like what are shown on the, on the photo here, as well as installations on top of major buildings within the region. It's been designed to provide appropriate coverage for police, fire, and ambulance users in an urban metro area such as we live in. This gives you a bit of a geographic perspective. It covers the area pretty much from Lions Bay in the north and the west part of Metro Vancouver, and actually extends a little bit outside of the boundaries of Metro Vancouver to Abbotsford. There are two colors on this slide. The darker green are jurisdictions in which all three services, so the local law enforcement, the local fire department, and the B.C. ambulance service, B.C. emergency health services are using the radio system. The lighter green are jurisdictions in which police and ambulance are currently using the system. As indicated on this slide, the Township of Langley has committed, has purchased its A share already, and will be transitioning to our, our radio system in, in February of, of 2018. There are, of the order, just to give you, give you a sense, a order of about 9,000 radios. So, that's individual subscriber units that are actually supported by the system. And we're actually in the middle right now of wrapping up a major technology refresh. Think of it as a lifecycle refresh program, where we've just finished replacing and evergreening the infrastructure that was originally put in place in 1999, when ECOM radio system first went live. So, we're now about to start the next generation operations of, of the system. The Langley RCMP will be transitioning in the fall of this year as well, as well as B.C. ambulance that also serves this area. An important point that needs to be, I think, highlighted quickly is, why does the ECOM radio system exist? It primarily and fundamentally exists, or was created, to address gaps that previously existed around interoperability of public safety communications within the region, going all the way back to 1994 in the original Stanley Cup Riot. Interoperability really means the ability to communicate across services and across jurisdictions as needed and as authorized. And this has been, in public safety and in the first responder world, been recognized as a major gap, going back all the way to, well, to 1994 in this region, certainly very much highlighted in 9/11 during the events that occurred, and many other events that have actually occurred in the U.S. and in Canada since. And fundamentally, this is about, you know, ensuring that the emergency services are able to appropriately communicate, not just within their own structures and within their own organizations, but across jurisdictions and across services as appropriate to the event. And that manifests itself in situations, particularly critical situations that involve multiple services and jurisdictions. A good example being fire mutual aid. There's certainly a lot of that going on as we speak right now, with resources from this region and others dealing with wildfires in the interior of B.C. Every day, we deal with cross-jurisdictional police events, certainly major planned events, be they, you know, in the summer or in the winter, you know, major sporting events or what have you, result in a large numbers of, of resources of different jurisdictions, working, having to work together. Certainly significant and major emergencies, plane crashes and what have you. And then even on a day-to-day basis, it's been shown that daily interoperability, particularly in, in responses that involve multiple services, motor vehicle accidents and other types of events, that we call the Combined Events Protocol, which is really the ability of the crews to talk to each other on the way into an incident scene, actually can very much speed response, can speed resolution of the event, and can also improve both public and responder safety. So, interoperability is, for the most part, what we are all about, and certainly what the radio system is all about, and what it was designed to build. I said I would just touch on a couple of points with respect to governance. There are two pieces of legislation that apply to, to ECOM, or are associated with ECOM. One is, of course, the B.C. Business Corporations Act. We are a private corporation enacted under, under that piece of legislation. But we have another aspect, which is, we are also established under the Emergency Communications Corporations Act, which was established in 1997, or enacted in 1997, excuse me. It is within the ministry, within the jurisdiction of the Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General. The Minister has ultimate authority around creating emergency communications corporations. There is ourselves, ECOM here in the lower mainland, and Crest on the southern Vancouver Island are the two emergency communication corporations that exist in B.C. And then, like any other corporation, there's a shareholders or a members agreement, which Chief Thompson referenced, and of course, the incorporating articles of ECOM. So, that really is the suite of documentation that's, that's relevant to how ECOM is structured. Like any organization, we have an organizational structure of, of course, you know, President and CEO and the management team that reports to him. But what is very, I think, unique and important about our organizational structure and our governance model is the direct relationship and direct linkage that exists between our users, as represented by our service committees, police, fire, and ambulance, and of course, those committees coming together to form the user committee and their direct ability to communicate with the Board of Directors. And I'll talk to what the Board of Directors is in the next slide. The Board, of course, is composed of, of eight municipal representatives. And as is noted here, the City of Langley will share two seats with the Township of Langley, Cities of White Rock, and, and City of Surrey. And that's defined currently in the members agreement. There is one representative on the board from B.C.EHS, two representing the province, one in the Ministry of Public Safety and Solicitor General, the other, Emergency Management B.C., which is in the Ministry of Transportation. E-Division, RCMP is represented. There are two police boards directly represented. There is one regional representative from Metro, appointed by Metro Vancouver, and then four independent directors that are on our board. So, that is how we are structured, and I'm going to stop there and ask if there are, are any questions.
Questions? Counselor Stortebum.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could just go back to that last slide, that'd be really great. Just to clarify something with regard to the board composition, revising of eight municipal seats to be shared. City of Langley will share two seats with Township, White Rock, and Surrey. Okay, so that's four municipalities and two seats. How do we share that?
I'm sorry?
How does that math work? We get like half a...
Those seats rotate. I believe it's on a bi-yearly basis. And the practice has been so far that I think Langley, City and Township have nominated one member in White Rock and Surrey, I believe. I think that's how it's, it's pretty much been, been happening in practice over the last number of years. But really, it's that grouping of municipalities that is entitled to nominate two members. And it's the board ultimately that, you know, establishes, I'm sorry, it's the, the groupings of municipalities that actually determine which individuals get nominated to represent them on the board.
To Counselor Stortebum, I think the current makeup of the two seats for this region is that Surrey will have one seat, and White Rock Township and City of Langley will then select one on an alternate basis.
Okay, is that going to give us enough time at the table to be as informed as, and providing as much input as we might prefer? Or, I mean, is that composition satisfactory?
I think that could be discussed, but currently, that's the makeup of the selection on who will be sitting for our sub-region.
Is that a paid position?
I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I missed the question. I'm sorry.
Is that position, the person who sits on the board, a paid position?
There's a stipend that's provided, associated with participation, I believe, in, in board meetings, as well as in the various committees of the board. So, it goes based on participation or attendance.
No, I can appreciate that. A stipend being just a monetary amount, nothing of any significance, not going to break the bank to have somebody else sitting at the table. Might be nice if we had somebody at the table all the time who stayed informed. So, I just want to put that out there and invite you to consider the makeup of the...
Yeah, it is, it is a matter for the Board of Directors of ECOM to consider. From time to time, the Board has considered changes to the composition of the board. What I outlined is what is currently... What I outlined is what is currently in place and defined in the members' agreement. There would have to be an amendment to the members' agreement to change the actual number of board seats as they represent the municipalities. The practice of actually nominating them, I think that is a bit more of an informal practice, which has occurred as a result of discussion between the groupings of municipalities.
At the end of the day, to the councillor's question, it really is up to the shareholders. So I live in the tri-city, so that's Coquitlam, Port Coquitlam, Port Moody, New Westminster, and they rotate it on a three-year term between, and the North Shore have a grouping, they rotate it between the three of them every three years. So it's really up to the group who they pick. The number of seats assigned to a particular block is defined in the members' agreement. But that it's up to the municipalities to make their choice. Yeah, no, I understand. I appreciate your response. In my experience, more is better, and the more exposure I get, the more I learn. Besides, you're growing the program throughout the region, so I can't help but think that at some point you'll probably be looking to maybe enhance the Board of Directors. And if it doesn't cost you a whole heck of a lot, that's not a bad idea.
It would be churlish not to recognize councillor Martin, who served as a director for a number of years and who guided us on many, many of our activities, including the strategic plan. And so I think she's got good familiarity with the ECOM board and where we're going. And it was certainly an honor having you there.
Yeah, it's a great program, and I'd love to learn more. Thank you very much.
It's funny you say that. I was going to mention councillor Martin because for a few years, she was looking at that and trying to get the City of Langley interested in it, so the day has come.
Mike talked about interoperability and the importance of it. And so we talk about it every day, but I think at the moment, and you mentioned it earlier, the Hundred Mile House area, the Williams Lake area, that's very much top of mind, and a lot of people are in very risky situations there, and they don't all have interoperability between all of the services. I had the honor to work with the Honorable Gary Philman doing the review of the 2003 firestorms, and what we saw was that the operations on the ground had a higher level of risk because police, fire and ambulance couldn't communicate. If you look at the most recent Fort Macbury fires, they were reviewed by both KPMG and Myers-Norris Penny. And both of those audits said the lack of interoperability raised risks and led to inefficiencies on the emergency ground. So what councillor's doing here, I think, is very much speaks to the safety of the responders and thus the safety of the public. If they can all speak together, they can manage a situation so much better than if they can't.
And speaking on the safety of the community, I did go out today, and I spoke with Mr. Baumhoff today, you know, on an area that should be looked at, because, you know, there are some very dry areas out there, and it wouldn't take much. In a tight urban corridor that we have, an issue could happen. So I believe he's going to be sending some staff out to take a look at some spots out there. Anybody else? councillor Vandenberg?
Hi, I just have a quick question in regards to the actual building where the ECOM telecom operators are located. I know there is plans to move it over the bridge into Fraser Valley. Are we just keeping it in Vancouver in one area? And do you not have any concerns of keeping all your telecoms operators in one location for the entire lower mainland?
There is no plan to move that facility. It is going to be there for the long haul, we believe. But what we are actively looking at is options to add diversity and redundancy to our facilities. So in other words, one of the locations would make sense to actually construct and operate, and certainly areas within the Fraser Valley are being considered at this point. It is something that is under consideration by the Board of ECOM at this point, but no firm plans are yet in place for the expansion to another facility beyond what I mentioned in construction of another facility on the lower island to serve that area.
councillor Martin?
Thank you. Well, it's nice to see you both again. And, you know, I'm going to thank Dave because when I was on the Board of Directors, he filled me in on a lot of information that I was unaware of. And, you know, I talked to Rory about it, and this goes back several years. So I'm really happy to see that we're finally getting this. I guess when I first realized that there sort of was no cross-communication between the fire and the ambulance and the police, it's kind of astounded me. But, you know, in the event of a major event in this community or in Metro Vancouver, this is a necessity for us to have. So I'm really glad that we're moving forward on this. And Dave, I want to thank you for all the conversations that you and I had, sometimes over a hamburger and the barbecues, and, you know, taught me of some of this communication issue. It was very valuable. So thanks for being here tonight, and it's nice to see you both again. And Rory, congratulations on getting this up and running. The test will start, I guess, soon, and we'll see how it all goes. Thank you.
Further questions?
Well, there's a motion that the City Council approved the purchase of one Class A share in ECOM, and that City Council authorized the chief administrative officer and the corporate officer to execute the agreement to be bound on behalf of the city. And I'm quite sure councillor Martin, second by councillor Albrecht. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous for. And the next item, and then, is Bylaw 3024. First, second and third reading of the bylaws cited as the City of Langley Fire Rescue Service Emergency Communication Services Enabling Bylaw Number 3024. And I would imagine councillor Martin would like to move that one. And councillor Stortebum, all those in favor? Unanimous for? So we're on our way.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Rory. Anything else? Nothing? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn. councillor Vandenberg, councillor Pahal, all those in favor? It's done. Unanimous for.